Here. Okay. I will call this December third meeting of the planning commission to order it at seven oh one. And we'll do roll call Allison Miller.
Elizabeth Saul.
Amanda Tout.
Paul in Forsyth.
Baro.
Okay. And um first, we will review the minutes. Did everybody already do that before the meeting? Would like to motion.
Move to adopt the minutes of the November fifth twenty twenty five meeting as submitted.
Second.
All of you? Yes.
I.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shall we go straight to the public hearing?
We have nobody else on line, so.
Okay. Well, James, yeah. So. I will open the public hearing on triplexes and residential design standards at seven oh three. And. First is the staff report.
So, thank you. Uh, I'm going to start just with a basic overview of the staff report that was issued on the twenty fourth for the hearing tonight. Um. Currently, Leavenworth does not have designer regulations that allow for triplex housing in our residential zones. Um, attached housing of three or more units is currently considered multifamily housing, and this is only permitted in the multifamily district. And uh, triplexes offer many of the same benefits of duplexes and ADUs, which are permitted in the residential zones, and this can increase housing supply and diversity and affordable homeownership opportunities. One of the key implementation steps identified in our comp plan and the current housing action plan was to consider necessary design standards to ensure compatibility with the character of residential neighborhoods as well. And then during during our joint meeting on July second, we met with the council and they asked us to prioritize triplexes um, along with residential design standards to ensure that they would fit in the existing neighborhoods of the city. And. The planning commission, as you know, spent the last three months reviewing this code and tweaking it here and there. Um. And those recommendations from the commission are incorporated into the draft documents um before you tonight. Uh, this did go through an expedited sixty day review with Commerce. I just received the notification this week that they that was granted. Um. And this notice of planning commission hearing was published on that Echo Online and in the Leavenworth Echo as well. And we did not receive public comments. Um. And we, from the public, you know, from agencies, I know we have an agency member here tonight. Um. I was going to try to share screen just to walk through the proposal, but um, it's all in the staff report and I haven't got, or not in staff, we're in the um. The draft changes and uh. I think everyone here has already seen those in the agenda packet. Um, I'm trying to find them so I can share screen here. If we do need to walk through them, would would you would the commission like me to walk through the changes? Or are you? Okay.
We've.
Read them a lot.
I want to ensure. So um, those were attached to the staff report for availability by the public. So um, because of the the minimal amount of attendees, we're going to skip that. Um, and that would conclude my report.
Okay. Then uh, we will open up for public comment. Stand up here.
Yeah, name and address.
Yeah, name. Do you need a different pen? That's not working.
Oh, it's just a brand new one.
That's my.
Here.
I can't see it. That's the problem.
Uh, I I handed you the wrong one.
So to expedite my comments, Dana Walter, Community Development Director for the county. Um, we reviewed the proposed changes um and I want to just acknowledge that we have a really good relationship with city Leavenworth staff. And so we appreciate you guys sending that to us and voting. We're trying to um coordinate better, I think uh, the county department has failed in properly renewing voting habits that come through. Each of the jurisdictions, not just the city of Leavenworth, which just caused problems for implementation down the road. So we're trying to take a much more active and a better role upfront. So thank you for sending that to us. Uh, regarding the amendments proposed tonight, uh, the county would just ask that you consider one thing. Um, the sewer connection issues have been kind of ongoing um, in the county, in the UGA, because your sewer lines don't actually reach out to um, and and they shouldn't, but they don't reach out to all the areas of UGA that are zoned to now accept uh, well, the really the RA telling and the triplexes, triplexes, which we don't consider multifamily. Um, but with the other provisions in your code currently, unless you can hook up to sewer, we would have a tough time in UGA implementing this. So what we would ask is that we put in a provision um acknowledging, you know, I want to acknowledge that this is uh, forward to the middle housing goal that we're all required to accommodate, but put in a provision that would allow these uh, triplexes to still be built if they weren't able to hook up to sewer. So for example, if uh, in the water code, you have uh, you have to hook up if you're within a certain number of feet from an existing water main. I would just propose something similar for uh, the sewer to accommodate sewers so that if you were outside of basically a stone's throw of being able to connect to the sewer, that you could still take advantage of this. And I'm going to use the example of East Leavenworth Road. We want infill, you want infill, we want to be able to meet that middle housing goal. Um, but under the current standards, if they can't get sewer, um, they may not be able to. We want to make sure that the people in UGA are able to take advantage of this. So again, the county would just ask that you consider uh incorporating some language that would allow this to occur in the UGA, or if they were within a certain uh, distance of or outside of a certain distance of the existing sewer main, that they still be able to do it. Sure.
You asked whether constituencies do this, and if they comply, do you have verbiage that they have used that might be attempted to be?
That's a great, no, this is the first one that's come up. You are the first jurisdiction to come to us with the middle housing accommodations. So it's going to be a conversation that we have with every jurisdiction. Um. So yeah, you're the first, the first one, first apply.
Question. I'm not an expert in sewer logistics.
Not mine.
I'm I'm just really curious, we said if they can't get sewer, then they might not be able to implement. I'm wondering if you could just go to a little more detail about why that is and why.
Yeah, so. So the existing city code requires POCA, um, and there are some parameters for a little bit of flexibility. I don't have the authority to make independent decisions with that flexibility. I'm bound by the code. Um, and the health district also is kind of bound by the code. Um, and I use East Leavenworth Road as an example because you don't have sewer over there. Um, and so with the ADUs, you all change the code so that you didn't have to be hooked up to sewer, you'd use the existing septic. But that doesn't relay then to footbacks and conditional use permits and um, additional housing that was specific to ADUs. So I was thinking and brainstorming with names um, on, you know, what's what's the best way to slay this so that people can still take advantage of it and not be bound to the sewer requirement? Because it may not ever happen in some areas of UGA.
So um, thank you for your comment.
This is.
There are two other people, um, it looks like.
Okay.
Comments.
Oh, so uh, we should probably just move on and get through the comments, and then we will talk about this more when we discuss and make sure, because we talked a little about how to address that. So when we have our discussion before voting, we'll make sure that that's on the same page.
Okay, we should get to all of them to talk.
Okay.
So.
So.
No, they don't.
No, um. Ask them.
So Taylor or Hannah, would you like to speak?
Does anyone else like to make a comment? Okay. No. Then I am going to close the public comment. At seven twelve. And then we, someone can make a motion. We then will have further discussion. Thank you, Dina.
Alright. So I need to approve the changes to one of this of the eighteen thirty six dot two five, eighteen thirty six dot three three, eighteen thirty six dot four five, twenty one dot one zero.
Okay. Yeah. Hold on one second. On seconds. Okay. So my follow up question based on what Dina brought up. Um, and I kind of wanted to ask this while she was here, but really it's a question for you, Maggie. Um. Did the county adopt Title fourteen? Or will they adopt Title fourteen?
They.
It is on their website.
It is on their website as adopted. Um, they did adopt the change for ADUs that we pushed through earlier this year.
And the ADUs, we took, we took the language out of Title eighteen and we put something in Title fourteen.
That was specific to ADUs.
And that was specific to ADUs, but in Title fourteen, it specifically, it it says, is the language about the same as what we added in duplex and triplex where it says where city services are available? Like, is that similar?
I think I was very specific about this does not apply in the UGA.
Okay.
For the ADUs.
Because I think we should probably be very consistent because we went through this, we went through this whole process with ADUs already, where the county was like, well, you're not allowed to have ADUs because your code says that separate services are.
Let me pull that apart, whatever. I'll pull it really quick so you guys can see.
Yeah. So since. She brought that up. Oh, Hannah is.
James is Hannah.
Oh, James, here.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Okay. Wait, wait, wait.
James, you can unmute.
Hey, James, I just promoted you to panelist, so go ahead and accept the motion.
That's James.
Is that James?
No, not his.
Okay.
It is me. I've broke, I've somehow broken Zoom completely. Um, I'm using the computer as well. Um.
Let me put you on the front page. Hold on. Let me pass up.
So it, what? Oh, is he?
Fine.
I found the code section. I'm sure.
I, you know, I I can, I would wanted, my thought on this is the infill question around um, on East Leavenworth Road, and I don't necessarily think that any of us would say that's the priority for the city. Um, like, I I don't, I don't know. I think I'm kind of okay with the code as it is restricting or pushing infill into the city limits. Just my two cents on the. I don't think it needs to necessarily be changed um, from what it is.
But you're basically, you're saying that it's not a concern if the code is written in such a way that the county says you're not allowed to do triplexes and duplexes.
Triplexes and duplexes on septic systems on East Leavenworth Road is probably not like, from a perspective of sustainability and um, I I don't know. I don't see it as a, as a very viable path. What was that called? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
What about on steel? I mean, there's a lot of areas outside of the city limits.
Like Riverbend.
Yeah, but those are, those are in our UGA, and so that's where like the section of UGA that she's specifically referring, that we just heard, were heard in comment, like, for me, doesn't necessarily, I thought we were going to either drop East Leavenworth or kind of slide our, a lot of, you know, that the re, the plan we were looking at a while ago shifted more of the UGA up onto ski hill. So again, it's like where we, where the UGA is placed, like. I I don't know. I, it's a, it's a, it's a question.
Yeah, my counterpoint to that, like, I agree that like, I don't expect we're going to get a bunch of applications for like triplexes on Riverbend or something, but um, I also think that because it is the UGA, we have a responsibility to.
Yeah.
Make sure that it is an option in those areas.
Yeah, so I mean, then mimic the code, I think, from the, the ADU code we wrote.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would be great if we could be consistent in the utility connection language with whatever changes we made with ADUs.
So it would be easy to do. There we said um, such connections and separate ser, so can I read it?
Yeah.
So except within the city's urban growth area, an accessory dwelling unit must be connected to the water and sewer utilities of the city and shall have separate services for an accessory dwelling unit greater than nine hundred square feet. Such connections and separate services shall not apply to an accessory dwelling unit located within the city's urban growth area.
Hmm. So it's taken care of for an ADU, but it's not the triplex.
Right.
Yeah, that was a strong point. Well, but the way we wrote it here, it says separate water and sewer shall be required for each unit where city services are available, which then if they're not available.
Right. I think they wanted something more clearly defined for their.
Because that's like there are houses on Riverbend that are within two hundred feet of a sewer main, but they can't connect because they're below it and they would have to build a whole new lift station, so you can't connect. But technically, it's like close enough that that might need a definition of available.
So, but it would be on our water interest. I don't know. I think it would be based on our water availability, like somebody, or sewer availability form. So if somebody submitted that and we said it's not, it's not available, and they could take that to the county and it says not available, that would, that's a tool to say, yeah, it's not available. So that's their, that's their record.
That could define availability.
I mean, yeah, that's what water and sewer providers do for new development is, is it available or is it not? So if it's not available, then they, they wouldn't connect. And because I don't want to say this doesn't apply in the UGA completely because I don't know how we do this, but in um, there's some areas that do have sewer in the UGA. And so if they do have a sewer connection and it's a triplex, we want it to apply in the UGA where the sewer is available.
But if. So maybe James has a point, the current wording, maybe we just keep it and that ambiguity, we utilize that to our advantage to help the people that need it and say that it's not available, so go to the county and they should allow it to permit.
No, but they're not going to. That's the point. That's the point you're making. She won't do that.
Let's not have ambiguity.
But not so.
But I feel like you have a lot of availability.
She didn't say, and I was confused about like, so if it's not available, why would then it not be feasible? Is it because the county is autumn, or is she saying?
She's saying they would deny it. That's what she.
Because of why?
It's too ambiguous. And so I think also, if you just put two hundred feet in there, I think that that, that would make her happy, or her, the county, they would then approve these.
But if it's two hundred feet, like, I'll say that's not, it's not actually available.
How about?
That's.
I mean, I don't.
I don't sound.
Can we get a raise?
It's on it?
Yes.
You know, so I don't know if there is a metric that you buy here.
Well, there is a distance on it in the water, like what her point was, there is a distance in the water section. It says within one, two hundred feet of a water main.
Yeah, they doesn't say that.
By line, sewer line.
Yeah.
Elevation.
Yeah. One plus one.
We can ask Andy, right?
You have to.
And I know we talked about this in our, in the previous meetings, and I thought that this language kind of worked in that way because you can get a water availability and a sewer availability letter, and if the city's signing that and saying it's not available, they can take, that's a, that's an actual document they can take.
Have you talked to the county about that?
Well, I just tonight.
Okay.
For.
No, no, we, we. Okay. What, what was her, did you show her the language that we?
I sent this to her two weeks ago, like, you know, for, I I tried to send everything to the county before this so that I can get feedback.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Based on her comments, it wasn't clear what her opinion was of the current language that we put.
She, she says it doesn't work.
Okay.
And it's been more precise or more clear, but I don't think there's a way to put a specific number on that. I think.
I don't like the number.
I don't see it.
You're adjoining your property. Can't deal with that.
I bet we could find a code from a different, um, a different jurisdiction that has had this issue, like, I bet there's something in writing that we could find and bring to you.
I'm wondering if we can just phrase it the same way, if we can do the same thing we did for ADUs. Like, it was said as like, like in title, that's in Title fourteen, right? That Title fourteen says like.
Separate connection.
This is when different connections are required. And so wherever in Title fourteen, it says like each dwelling unit is required to have a connection, we say like exception duplex and triplex units may be connected.
I just didn't open up Title fourteen because it's totally different chapter that we're working on.
But that's where the ADU went. That's the only place where we refer to.
And we currently have duplex in eighteen, so I just added triplex to it. So if we could fix that language, and then event, long term, we'd need to fix fourteen, obviously. To not say I'll dwell it. Sorry, I'm talking over you.
Well, I just had a, a question. Um, does the city have like a, do we have a a sewer expansion feasibility like on the low? Like, because it would seem that like, just like being able to write a, like draw a little line of like, this is where sewer is beautiful and then like, you know, build out plan of that, that that would allow us to determine where.
I think the availability, though, makes perfect sense. It it it's us.
Maybe we could just be, instead of saying where they're available, we could say.
Where determined available.
Has determined that they are available.
Okay, where determined available by the city or?
Yeah.
Because then, then we have that form already.
Yeah.
They get a copy when they go in for a subdivision. They have to have their water and sewer availability, and if there's no sewer availability, then they have to do septic.
Yeah.
So if they have that, that's just documentation that they could have, and I think that I could even run it by legal just to make sure, like.
So if it was like separate water and.
Spell it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the testings.
That's a good idea.
Where the city determines services.
Yeah, separate water and sewer utilities shall be required preaching it where the city determines that services are available or where the city provides documentation that services are available.
Yeah, I think that would work.
So if we're just very specific about like.
It's a letter.
You, yeah, you have to get this.
Should be where, when, when the city determines or?
I'd say where makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's where.
Okay, thank you.
We're talking about a place.
Where the city.
Ah, man, I wish. They even hope so.
Should apply for each unit where the city determines s- services are available? Should I explicitly say water?
These services.
Water and sewer. Where water and sewer.
There's still water and sewer, right?
Water and sewer, I mean, these services.
But what if there's only one? I I really.
Or. Water and or.
And or. There you go. I'm trying to.
Very explicit.
Yes, yes. Okay, so it would say separate water and sewer utilities shall be required for each unit where the city determines water and or sewer services.
Are available.
Are available.
I also think.
Where or if.
If these services aren't available, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I think we, we're trying to encourage people to submit water availability even when they already have a connection, so we can make sure, yeah, our code allows you to have that you, that additional capacity, or we have enough fire flow. There's things we have to look at that maybe could trigger sprinklers because there's not a fire flow once you have that. I mean, there's a lot of things to look at. Um. So I like the idea of push, we push the water availability on everyone that's on our system anyway now. Um, and so that would just be, and then they have the documentation. It's no, it's not ambiguity. It's, it's not available.
Now, when they check out, when they look at our threads, it says it right there.
Yes.
Determine if it's available, and then, so they're like, did the city determine for you? Here's the determination. That should be very.
Yeah, very clear.
Okay, here's. Yeah. Can we? This is separate water and sewer utilities shall be required for each unit.
Except.
If if city services are determined to be available. But that. Yeah, if.
Okay. Let me just think separate.
See, I'm trying to think of, I'm trying to think if there's any way you could still interpret that to say that water and sewer utilities are required for the property.
Only if a bill. So.
If the city determines they are.
Because we're only, we're phrasing it as separate water and sewer utilities shall be required for each unit. So then.
It is for each.
This is just for the units. This is, it's just, it's saying what is, that you have to have separate utilities for each unit. But can we make it more clear that like?
This shall not apply to.
This shall not apply to anybody that.
Property served by.
Ability of said utility. I, I, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, as determined by the city.
If you can't hook up the water, then you don't need separate hookup for.
If you can't do.
You'd have to have a big enough well, which is regulated.
Say, if you're hooking up the property to water, then they need separate hookups. If you're hooking up the property to sewer, then separate hookups, right?
So what if?
Yeah. Isn't that the determination? Yeah.
What if the city determines services that water and sewer fill one? Would the city able to do that? Is that a possibility?
I mean.
Not for, for triplex, I mean, maybe multifamily, right?
Yeah, the only time we've had water, water flow issues is like.
My hopes up.
Yeah. But, but we required sprinklers and like, we required. That thing, that's its own little.
Pronouncing special.
Um, so I don't think that, so, so tell, tell me again. I'm going to write a couple different versions of this. So tell me again what, what you just said. Somebody. So whoever just said something.
Simon, you have to work, like, if utilities are required, then.
Why don't you read what you?
You said that right now.
It can be plain.
Like, or if, if utilities.
Check.
Separate hookups are required unless public determines are not available. And then you can have a determination thing that says, you know, and how availability is determined in a subsection or right there, then, or so you can.
So what I had originally was separate water and sewer utilities shall be required for each unit if the city determines water and or sewer services are available.
That sounds perfect. That's not, that's already in that?
No, that's.
Finally, you can hear.
Yeah, there we go. That's it, Maggie. Good job.
Can I, do you want me to restate this shall not apply to properties served by well and septic? I mean, it's so redundant, but do I need?
I mean, maybe.
It's not hurt to be.
Prioritize city water and sewer.
Hmm.
I have, I have a question. Are we going to ask for feasibility studies if somebody in the UGA wants to come and add two units or, and they are on their private well or a shared well, are we going to ask for feasibility studies on theirs or make sure that their septic systems are large enough to handle?
That, that would be on the county.
Let's say, that would be the health district.
Yeah. See, then the health district issues the approval of that.
Yeah.
When it's city, they get a water sewer and a water, they get availability letters.
And you're trying to cut out all the interviews so that they know when for sure.
But they're not going to know where a line is, so they're still going to have to call us and say, are they within two hundred feet of a line? This would be something clear that they have.
Yeah, I think that.
I think this is perfect. Okay. So what I just read, so you have a motion on the table? Are there any other?
Oh, well, that was in my discussion.
I know, you guys can continue discussion. I did fix all the, all the typos I had. So, um, I fixed those four. Um, I fixed those four. And they will go back. I will review them again. Oh, oh, yeah, this will be reviewed by the council too. It'd be great. Oh, I'm no, you guys have a motion, actually. I don't know how to do this.
Is there anything else we want to discuss other than the line? So.
That was the day.
Yeah. Do we need to like redo the motion as amended?
Yeah, just need to make a movement to amend it. Or.
Motion to move amendment. Mend the motion.
Then try previous motion to adopt the language that. Uh, this goal's just uh not allowed to us. For section. Eighteen thirty-six oh four five E.
And I'm saving this.
So then Elizabeth managed her motions. And Simon seconded. Thank you. Okay, all in favor.
Hi.
James. Hi, James.
Good.
Yeah, he's still here. He's a pastor. He's right there.
He wait, he raised his hand.
I'm good. We're good. Yes, I'm in favor.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you for working through that and wordsmithing that better. Um, I think that's very clear and it gives them a tangible tangible piece of paper that they can take.
Um, okay. We will close this public hearing at seven thirty-three. And I. Now that, you know. Part of the public hearing is just my commentary. I do think it is entirely possible that the county will not be satisfied. But. Yeah, I think we've. Given it our best shot. And. I also think that this is not. Imminently going to be a problem, the way that like when this was happening with three D N's, it was a very, very big problem. So. Down the road, maybe even when we meet with the council and talk about the docket, it can be like, do we need to review some of our standards in title fourteen? About utility connections. And clean up language there to be more consistent. And then we could eventually take that line out if we feel like we adequately adjusted title fourteen.
Like that and.
But for now, hopefully this. Will be fine.
Yes.
Hopefully it will not stop anybody.
Our docket item could be. Clarify connection requirements and then we can tap into multiple sections. So our titles, not just title fourteen, if it's if there's other areas, so. If I connection.
Okay. Next on our agenda is to discuss. Conditional uses.
Were you guys able to review the little that M R S C?
Yeah, that was really actually really helpful.
What I. What were your thoughts?
I just I like after I read it, I went through the table and was like, hmm, which these conditional uses can you get rid of and just call them all?
I so let me let me start by. Why you have a chart?
I have, I did um today. So this is a super draft that's. I was just, I just did it today. I was like. I I I feel like our conditional use code is is so poorly written that I thought we might wanna scratch the whole thing instead of all over. And so what I did.
Be except the B and B section.
Yeah, yeah, no, but obviously we can. Yeah, oh, absolutely. I didn't mean, yeah, to take that out. No, that because that was actually very helpful. I um but that that part of the code worked really well, but.
Yes.
So let me give you, that's mine. So I printed out um a draft. Conditional use section. And then the um what Maggie put together, this little. Spreadsheet. For everybody. I just thought I we we won't have kind of look at this tonight, but I thought you should. Let's give you your homework. Look, yeah, you can look this over this week and see if I if it's the right direction. I didn't wanna spend too much time. Yes. I didn't wanna spend too much time on it. If you guys are like, no, I don't like this idea at all and don't do it. So, you know, that's why I think it's very. So.
And it has examples, so it doesn't have all the.
It lists the examples, right? So there's three different, I I picked. Three different definitions that I had good, um, I thought had good um general standards for conditional use permit. And I mean, you can always, if you have a figure, you can find something else. I just um I thought straight up picture like nice and short. It made sense. Um, we need to have something that's more uh precise and so that. Was less ambiguous, I guess. And and so a lot of our conditional use permits don't, conditional uses don't even have. There's no definitions. There's no, there there's nothing that says. Like, well. If you wanna build a, you know, community center, what what are the list of initial like what's our criteria? And there's nothing listed at all, so. I think it's. It needs a lot of work. I'm trying to say, but I I just wanted to know if it was the right direction. You guys can look at it for next month and. This is the kind of stuff that makes me, I like that it's exciting about planning. I like to like rewrite things to make it better. So. It's fun. It's fun.
If you look at our current code, I missed some in my strikeout version, but. There are sections that don't make any sense that we.
Yeah, well, there's sections that don't, yeah, that don't apply, that don't apply at all. I guess talking about the planning commission in one part, but they don't. You guys don't hear conditional use permits. It goes to the hearing exam. It says something about that commission and it doesn't state what kind of commission. So, any, this is just a. What is a workshop? This is a workshop. Workshop. So I think one of the other. Important things to note. From the article was them that like you can still. Have special requirements for leases that are permitted outright. And for instance. For B and Bs. We purposely. Made the bar very high, like we purposely made it really hard for people. And so it's like. You know, we probably want to maintain. The C P requirement for B and Bs because we. Wanted to have a verified bar. We want to have boots to jump through, but for something like a church. Yeah. You're like, I mean, we could have. Some, like if we wanted to, if if it's like, well. We want churches to have extra view because of like parking and how big of a parking lot do you want in residential area? Then you can just. Have a note about parking. You know, but it's like, what else are you conditioning for the church?
Nice.
They're all on the.
Nice, nice.
Why would that be? Why would they have to go through that?
No, there was a huge problem when you asked you with a church, so. That is Chris neighborhood.
One church.
One church.
Very specific.
Yeah, I mean. I don't think about the churches we already have.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, they're all in the residential area at the time.
Yeah.
When they do festivals?
I can hear, uh, you know, you just have country. Right, yeah, uh, I.
They had amplified music that they. Broadcasting.
So, um.
Which.
Is that.
That's not allowed.
Yeah, but that I still, I mean. You're technically allowed to have like a. Like a house party. In the residential area. Also, like, I mean, Mountain Meadows, they've had. People perform music at Mountain Meadows outside, you know? Mostly that was during COVID, but some outdoor performances, um, but. It's not. I know, if it's limited and like. Just like that should be bound by. But also, yeah, do they have to have a festival permit of some kind to hold events?
We do have some of our festivals. We have a whole festival code, but not a special event code.
Right. Yeah, I guess.
There's specific events specifically qualified autumnly.
Because if you're having an event like trunk or treat in a commercial zone, you. Probably need a.
I mean, it depends.
But they don't over there. So I feel like that's kind of a, yeah. Then. So I feel like the point of. The like the conditional use permit should not be something that's used all the time. We should, we need to have a short list of things that need a conditional use. Like some of these should be taken out, I believe, and just either permitted outright or not outright or not allowed at all in the city. You know, like, there's some things that just it doesn't make sense that there's something like light industry, light light industry. I'm like, why is that not just? An outright allowed use in light industrial and just not anywhere else. Yeah, recycling center is only allowed in the light industrial zone, but still requires. And I don't know why does that need a C U P when it's like it's. So some of it, I feel like, like, we need to be more precise with our conditional use per. Code and make it more user friendly and make it make sense. So that's not so confusing and it, you know, that. It takes a lot of time to process those. It takes a lot of, it it costs a lot because um the hearing examiner is not cheap. It's time, so.
And then we also in that, in the report, it talked about the difference between like maybe if it's still needed a C P, a minor versus a feature and going through a different process.
Yes.
Curious about that. What is minor C P a techni- like a term of art, a real term of art, or is it just saying?
We could. It would be like processed through, um. Like Maggie could then uh approve, it would be an administrative approval instead of having to go through the quasi judicial.
So it's like adding, so it's adding uh uh. It's adding another bar, like if there is specific requirements they needed to be like. It was talking about like.
Yeah, that's what I think.
The one they have like different water and sewer requirements, so that that could be reviewed by the city as opposed to the.
To the hearing examiner.
Yeah, exactly. So.
That the.
They'd all have the same standard. It would just either get approved by the city. I feel like if the standards are really high and it's very easy to check a box and say, yes, they meet this. It could be an administrative approval. If there's some like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to. Have a.
Adventure park.
I'm not gonna say it. A a big commercial. Thing that that. I have to rule on the possibility when there's so many, uh, there's noise issues, there's there's traffic issues, there's. It's like if you look at.
When there's lots of different issues and lots of ambiguity, that's where we wanna conditional use.
Because it might not.
Minor C U P. When they need to uh meet some specific. Well-defined.
Yes.
Extra, extra, in addition to. You know, that you can't outright write in code. Because it might be subject to.
Yeah, and gives the hearing examiner some discretionary authority based on public input. On how to, I mean, and and.
Well, but. So i- is a conditional use permit tied to be? A quasi judicial review process that goes to the.
Right now it is, yeah, but it doesn't have to be.
I guess, and then, okay, so it doesn't have.
Well, there's different, because other jurisdictions do use this, like a minor.
You could have two categories.
Yeah.
Minor and major.
We define, we define what is minor first.
Right, yes.
There was a process.
Yes.
Can we redefine that? It seems like minor and major just to fill it off. Can we have conditional use use permit? Permits defined as that and quite judicial and have all the other ones defined as something else that is administratively done or does have to be labeled?
I'm wondering if we need a second like administrative review category? Or if. Things like overrated, we just say, well, it's permitted outright there with these additional requirements and then. It's assumed that part of the review process is. Do you meet these additional requirements?
So it would just be, I mean, that's, yeah, what what are you determined, like?
I I would support that, that suggestion.
You say that again.
Yeah, so for some very specific items that we're like, no, we want you to go to the hearing examiner and jump through the suits. That's still a conditional.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a few things, but then things that. Just require like, oh, you just need to, we just need to make sure you meet a couple additional requirements. That's permitted outright.
Instead of doing the minor.
Yeah, instead of a minor C P, you just say this is permitted outright, but there are these additional requirements.
I guess the question is, when when those, if we can articulate that those additional requirements are outright and very. Like now, I guess that's fine. I'm just wondering if there's something like, like if there's gonna be like dependencies on the state of. This sewer or whatever.
I mean, the the requirements don't have to be super specific in that regard. It can just be like, oh, well, if you're building like, you know, uh.
Really?
A brewery or like coffee roasting or other.
Yeah.
Um. Like food or manufacturing processes that go through.
Water.
A lot of water or have a lot of emissions, then like you need to need.
You need to go talk to.
Then you need to like make sure that ecology and like public works have reviewed and ensure that like. There's.
But then I guess what's the end that? Are we able to outright define that, right? Like, because I think that they would need to have. Do we need to be specific? If if we were to do that to say like, yes or no, that's a food and. Specific, if you just say, oh, water. Like ecology has. Flag off on it or ecology has. I guess what we do.
Yeah. So they wanted to the director will cut right in a C N O about like, okay, here's the conditions of approval. For this conditional use permit, so that you would look, she would look at each one. If it was, you know, it didn't go to the hearing examiner and say, okay, well, on this lot, I think we need to add these conditions. So that there's another level of. Review. Does that make sense?
It will, yeah. You could say though that you're trying to streamline this to some of the work and cost, but it seems like it's still a lot of work, but maybe we. Cut down the top of the hearing examiner, but it sounds like from a lot of the elements right back on.
Well, I think we're trying to cut out a lot of, there's some in there that don't make sense at all. And then there's some that have no criteria. There's no direction. At all, and it's really, it it's it's really confusing code. It doesn't. Work for them. It doesn't work.
The little highlight.
I guess the difference between, is there a difference really? In the process between outright allowing things, but with this certain categories having a different requirement versus this. Minor conditional use permit, it sounds like they're basically the same, or one like they're entitled until you're not, and one is.
Now, an example would be.
Like a difference of the version of proof or.
Can I, I I'll give an example. So like a. A hu- a group A home occupation is just issued by as a limited administrative review. A group B home occupation is permitted. It's not a C P, but it requires a full administrative review. So that means um you notify the neighbors, you have a a two-week public comment period. But it doesn't go to a hearing. It's just based on the information they provided. They don't meet the criteria or they don't. And if so, it, yeah, somebody commented, they can't, they can all say, I don't like it, but if there's, if it says. If they say what, how it does or does not meet the code, that's where you start to look at things and. And maybe do specific conditions outside of the scope. So I issue. At an actual decision for group B home occupation. We don't get them very often, but they're permitted outright in residential zone with that. Permit. But it goes through a, we can define which processes they go through. So it could be a permanent use. But we would define it as. It's it goes through full administrative review, because I think. I mean, I have a. In speaking with. Our city administrator and just the feedback he gets from the community, we have a very um, a community that wants to. Have a lot of say in a lot of things. And I think it, we want to appear, we, I mean, we want to make sure we're. Being transparent and giving them the opportunity to comment. If we don't have a process, if I like. Like a resident. There's certain processes that don't need to have full public comment period and things like that, like I think if you're like building your single family residence. Not everyone needs a public to to comment on that. They still can appeal it and follow the decision, but I think things that do do have any kind of impact. Um, it could be height, bulk, creation of traffic hazards, parking problems, any other. Um, it could be height, bulk, creation of traffic hazards, parking problems, any other adverse conditions. It, it makes sense to have some kind of process, either full administrative or quasi judicial for some of these.
Yeah, they play that sign.
No, so like even some, even some building permits, commercial building permit, require a full administrative review.
Well, I, yeah, I know, I, I can't. Because like, I mean, one of the big things that was really frustrating when the county was, uh, reviewing something this past year was that the, so everybody was told there was no availability for the public to officially comment on something. So I do think that it is important to have.
And does it require a public hearing? Maybe not. That's where you get to that full administrative versus quasi judicial. So you can still, you have a public comment period with both, but one has a hearing and one doesn't.
Can you give some examples of uh, uses in the code, land uses that are permitted outright, but that that use requires a full administrative review?
Oh, one, the, like the multifamily building going in right here. Uh, we have a permit for it right now. It's a four story, um, it's like little plots, kinda it, it's a.
So why did it trigger?
Because it's multifamily. And so it triggers a full administrative review, which means I posted the site and sent it to all the neighbors.
Wait, does any multifamily development?
Yes. Yeah.
Have a full administrative review? And that's in the multifamily, like that's in the use, like when you go into this use says.
It's a P, it's not a D.
Okay, yeah, so it's permitted, but then when you go into like multifamily.
It's entitled twenty one.
So that's another option. Take things out and, and.
So if you go to, um, twenty one, I think it's, oh, eight?
Application.
Oh, twenty one oh seven, sorry.
Application.
Yep. Oh, no, just kidding. It might be twenty one oh nine. Sorry, I have to find it. I'm guessing off the top of my head. No, here it is.
Application.
Twenty one, it's twenty one oh nine. So it's, this is where it says application review classification and there's four different, there's limited administrative, full administrative, quasi judicial and legislative, which is council. Um, and then, so the limited, and then twenty one oh nine oh three oh lists all the ones that are limited. So these don't have a public comment period. So that's your single family residence, your fence, your boundary line adjustments. Fill and grade. Those are like more minor.
That's where it lives, group B home occupations, multifamily.
Short plats. And any new commercial. So if it's a change of occupants, we don't do, but any new commercial, even if it, it doesn't trigger CIPA, will have a full administrative review. And any multifamily, even if it doesn't trigger CIPA, will require a full administrative review. It's like the one back here doesn't trigger CIPA, but we give the public an opportunity to comment. Or if you have a nine, a nine lot, short plat, it doesn't require CIPA or go to the hearing exam, like there's, there's thresholds.
Last one, aside, what if we were just to give her the ball condition of, of anything here permitted right now today? What, what will be the biggest negative or the biggest drawback that you guys will see from that tomorrow?
No public hearing.
Okay.
And no public comment. I think people will be really upset about, especially if you're like suddenly had a church in your backyard and you didn't get to have any, any say in that. I think, you know, that would be important for people to be able to, to say, hey, I, you know, these are my concerns about why, you know, or how, how to mitigate it better.
And I think it takes, it kind of brings this third person, this third party impartial person to make the decision. It's really hard to live in a, and work in a small community and make a decision that has four hundred people that are writing comments. And then you, it looks like this, i- it's nice, it gives kind of a buffer to staff and between staff and the public for some of these bigger issues. Uh, it really, it, it does make a difference. I've been on both ends. I've been a commenter against, on a, not against, um, on a CUP application and it, it's nice to even at least feel like I had a voice, like I could say something. And I felt like, cause the, the, when you write a comment, you're like, thank you, your comment's been received, it'll be reviewed. Uh, you, sometimes people want to be heard.
Yeah, yeah.
And they wanna come to it in this case.
If it's, if it's, if it's something that we're like, we, we do want people to jump through hoops for this. It's not, I, it's not a, you said, we're like, oh, we wanna make this as easy as possible. I'm like, no, we want people to jump their hoops. Then you do a CUP.
Yeah, first, you wouldn't want a bed and breakfast in every single house in Levenworth, right?
Correct.
That'll be a lot.
So we also, we also do BME permits quite frequently. We have very complex standards that we have to make sure they meet and nobody comes to the hearing and nobody comments. So it's a long drawn out process. I would almost think those would be permitted. With just, with just those conditions and do a full administrative review.
I mean, yeah, if, if we.
There's very, it's all the same criteria that's there. It's just the process because we have to verify. Is it owner occupied? I ask for their voter registration and their ID and I get copies of things to make sure you do live here. And, and, I mean, they have to meet all this criteria that we verify.
Yeah, like you, you verify they meet all the criteria before it goes to the public hearing. And then the hearing examiner is like, well, you've already decided they meet the criteria.
There's, there's.
Yeah, it's right.
Once, once we beefed up the, once we beefed up the criteria for those, it made it very, it's, it's very hard to miss anything. I mean, you check every box.
Yeah.
Um, where.
We, we do want some things where the third, we, anything that's in.
It could have a.
If you wish, right? But like, how do you define what's ambiguous?
Some, well, they clearly, I mean, we could look at, like, the way we define conditional uses as those which may be appropriate, desirable, convenient or necessary in the district they're located, but by which reason their height or bulk or creation of traffic hazards or parking problems or other adverse conditions, other may be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, comfort and convenience unless appropriate conditions are imposed. And then, and then it goes into and that's where it is still ambu- like, I feel like a church could be a scale this big, it could be a scale this big. I think it needs a CUP because we, we aren't gonna be the judge of, we don't, I think there's a lot of impacts to a neighborhood. I think a school, if it's not in a public zone, if it's not could have an impact, could have an impact to the neighborhood. I think like the breweries, they're only allowed in commercial and industrial, so they're not an impact to the ne-, I think it's the uses that are allowed in the residential zones that are like a bigger impact. I don't know, like bus stop is a CUP.
One question, how, how much effect does the public have? I'm only saying that because I, I questioned like, yes, we wanna allow the public to have opinion, but e- even if all your neighbors came and spoke against it, as long as you check all the boxes and technically what you're doing is legal and within the zoning and
I couldn't, I couldn't.
It gets allowed, right? So.
Well, no, but I can, let me comment on that. They got, I have a really good example of that because I got like sixty comments on that fence that went around the well site. People were really upset about it. And we did change the scope of the fence. The fence is now smaller and it doesn't have barbed wire on top.
That's good.
So.
You're the city, you're not a.
Yeah, but we make, um, but we make, I still, if I had been permitting that, I would have listened to the public and said, hey, you know, we can make this fence smaller, even if it was someone else saying, I wanna put a fence up here. So it absolutely does matter.
But, but also.
That's your variable.
But there were no specific criteria for that either, and that's another reason why we're digging into this.
But if I'd be excited.
Ah, yes, we need criteria.
And the comments are kind of loose. That's my question. Is there a full enough public comment for a lot of these things that we don't need it or?
I think the community that enter, th- those, some of those bigger things like an ice rink, like some of these things, it, it could be an ice rink, it could be a pool, it could be a water slide. I mean, there's so many what ifs that it, I think it does need, like, we need to have standard conditions that would apply for part, you know, some of those things, but there might be things outside of the standards that could impact the neighborhood that we didn't think of. Like with adventure park, we didn't think about screaming as a noise issue. We thought of the coaster being the noise issue. And then, like, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So.
It's not hilarious when, uh, we used to think nature and screaming, people, you think of people in danger and then people are screaming like they're dying. You're like, oh my God, he's dying.
And it's, so, so I think it's hard to, for some of those that could have a big impact, I think they're, they're from somebody who would have to make those decisions, I'd rather.
And they are helpful. They really are. And we do listen to people. We do.
I realize it's not a super great thing to say on the record, but the hearing examiner, it is extremely, extremely rare that he disagrees with the staff report. So the purpose of the public hearing, like it, yeah. Going to the hearing examiner with a full-on public hearing accomplishes very, very well because the staff, like the staff has already reviewed everything and the staff provides a report. We have a totally different staff when the adventure park happens.
Yeah.
But we're not for that. Like the hearing examiner was like, yes, I hear all of these comments and, uh, it does not sway me this following staff department. And, and it is so, so, so rare for the hearing examiner specifically the hearing examiner that we have to, to disagree with the staff report regardless of, of public input. So, so it's like the, but the staff report already takes some amount of public comment consideration. So, so it's like the number of projects for which, like it has, yeah, it has to be a really big deal. And, and honestly, the main purpose, like Maggie said, is to create kind of a buffer and so that, so that the public is not like.
Why did you, you made this decision?
This is your fault, you know?
So, so then you guys would know better than us. So there are obviously some really important ones in here that he.
You not wanna be at them.
But I'm, I'm questioning if we even need a CUP for bed and breakfast.
Yeah, I know, not that we do.
Because like, I, I, you, I'm so, I think that there are some hot button ones on here for sure, and you guys will be better, uh, you know, attuned to help us understand which those are, but I would agree that if the conditional use permit is such a process and it is an unnecessary process for a lot of the things that we have on our list, then let's cut it back. I totally agree with that.
So if we're not, if we're not looking at major minor, can you think of it as like administrative versus hearing examiner on this phone? And if you could, can, like, as far as review process, full administrative versus.
Or status.
You know, and, and it might end up being a different name, like, you know, in Manchester, they have like type one, type two, type three, type four, type five. They're like numbered permits and though, I mean, I think City of Shalton has that too for some types of permits. And so that's not uncommon where we'd say conditional use permit. So this type of permit, that these other ones are a type, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very impressed, like, looking at this list on here of what requires limited administrative review, AKA just your standard single family building permit.
Oh, on the highlighted.
Versus what requires full administrative review. I'm like, a lot of things require a full administrative review. But for, and, and I guess the assumption is that when you're doing a full administrative review, those things such as multifamily, we have a chapter that has all these additional requirements about multifamily. So you have review criteria when you're doing this full administrative review. So so we do still have to go through and come up with like, well, what additional administrative review criteria do we want to apply?
Right.
For all these different uses.
Uh, it's a long, it's gonna be a long haul.
Yeah, it's a big problem.
But if we could have some of these, like, if you look at this list, go through and mark, just mark the ones that you're like, wow, this should not be a CUP. That would be the easiest thing to do first is like.
One thing that I would like to see is you've got, if your center like number two, and then for the dam, we've got education centers, education facilities, you know, group some of these into air and, uh, transportation, chemicals, um, you know.
Yeah.
Group that needs a bit more.
Exactly.
Let's, let's do a gender grouping and then from there, I think we can.
Like the impact, which impacts are the same?
Thinking about like, yeah, like copy printing establishment.
That should even.
No, I don't agree. I think those should not be in there at all.
No, but I mean, a lot of those, it's just like utilities, like there's a greater impact on like utilities or emissions. And so that's kind of a category that like the only reason that this requires additional review is because of potential like disproportionate impact on utilities. And that can be like a category where it's like, oh, if you have any of these, you just have to make sure that your utilities are sufficient.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
How, how do we wanna tackle that?
Also got manufactured home parks and you've got plenty of homes. Well, um, are faces, the more.
We regulate them, we. They are, we regulate them the same way. Our code needs to be updated.
It's really bad. That's actually a huge problem. This, I mean.
But it was hard to tackle. We went through that and I was like, I don't even know how to touch this with a ten foot pole because it's from the eighties and it's they're, I mean, they're not even called manufactured home parks anymore.
No.
And so we need to, that's another thing that we need to.
We need to update that whole code station also.
And, and we can bring tiny homes into that discussion.
So that, yeah.
That could be something where we tie them into a separate.
Be combined.
Mm-hmm.
But it has to be all pre-done.
Oh, and then the criteria isn't even under CUP criteria, it's its own chapter, so it's.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, cause we have your criteria, there's only a handful of actual past criteria in code. So what are you using to review the rest of these?
Like.
Stage, common sense?
No, so, uh, this, so if you look at, if you, do you, are you guys able to pull up, uh, the LMC?
Yeah.
Do, um, eighteen, whatever we're on right now, conditionally. Okay, let's do eighteen fifty two.
Eighteen fifty two.
So what?
Eighteen fifty two, yeah.
So if they, if they don't have specific criteria, we've been reviewing them under eighteen fifty two oh six oh.
Which is really supposed to be.
Eighteen fifty two.
Additional requirements and conditions, and it's for the hearing examiner. It's supposed to be for the hearing examiner to impose. It's not supposed to be used in that way, like it, it's.
This is like a laundry list. It's like, they could impose addition.
Yeah, we also, oh, sorry.
Which is again, usually the staff report would recommend what conditions to impose.
But we can't have a condition without finding.
Which, are you finding that that's?
Um, it's hard.
Okay.
That's how good.
That's, it's after reading, and then would, I guess, the, follow my question would be like, do you think that it would be possible to articulate what those actually are or outline those better to help you?
I think that.
It's gonna be.
No, I think it can be defined, like that's the, um, the, this, there's a few examples, a very short system kind of, I use the city of Milton, the city of Plummer and the city of Wenatchee.
Okay.
And they have a specific section that's just the development standard. It's, uh, uh, the, what's it called? General conditional use criteria. This is short and precise and we need something like that. We have nothing, which is
Got it.
So not helpful. So when we got. So that could be part of why people are angry with things like adventure parks, because there weren't no standards. So we had nothing really to review, except for our CIPA and what I just showed.
Yeah.
So without standards, we have nothing to make a decision.
It's all feeling, it's very hard to say what was allowed.
So I think this would, the community would appreciate it. I think we would appreciate it as staff. Um, it's a big thing to tackle, but I like all of your ideas about grouping them for like going, I'd like it to go through the list and just cross out the ones you guys think absolutely not, we do not need it, any kind of, they just should be permitted. And then maybe the one that should be put in, like here, like an A if it should be administrative and a C if it should be a CUP, like a true CUP that goes to the hearing examiner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Administrative and C, does that make sense? AC? And we don't have to do, waste time tonight on this. If, like, you can take this as homework and email me.
Homework.
There are so many ones on there that are like so hyper-specific. Both fuel storage and the light industrial area. It's like, I'm sure there are so many rules about that. We don't even need to get in the way.
Fire, fire code, fire code.
Let them go through the process of trying to put that together.
Right, why is that just not a, a use in that zone?
So both fuel storage, yeah, there, there's, there's the fire code that regulates it. They need a fire permit.
Exactly.
And they, that regulates setbacks, that, what?
Helicopter?
We have to.
Why are we determining the helicopter?
I'm sure that they, they.
We have.
I get, or I mean, do we?
There could be.
I'm sure that that would have to be a CUP if we're really putting that in the board in the residential area, but.
Oh, that's.
I mean, it's also not, it's also not a residential.
Is it allowed only in light industrial?
It's only allowed in light industrial.
We have defined a hall port, they don't need access. There's all of it, that's what. Oh, no, it's fun.
But like a bus or taxi stop. The, it, it, it's a permanent everywhere, but it needs a CUP in the residential zones.
But why?
Why?
These neighbors wanna be able to comment on where the bus stop can go, cause people are nervous about transient use. I don't. These neighbors wanna be able to comment on where the bus stop can go, cause people are nervous about transient use. I don't. We went through.
That seems discriminatory, honestly.
They went, I'm I'm just saying, that's the feedback I got the last time we opened this, because we did eliminate it. In the commercials, we're like, it doesn't need a CUP in the commercial zones, the bus stop, it's transit. But we need, we want, if we want people to start using multi other phone, other modes of transportation. I mean, right now there are none in the residential zones. Like if Link wanted to add a route, they'd have to go through a CUP.
Yeah, so I did actually have a conversation with someone from WU. Uh, as I was commenting on their expansion in each criteria. And I was asking, why are you not sending buses through residential zones? And the comment was, the residents in the residential zones don't like seeing buses on their streets.
Yeah, it's true.
That was what we do.
Really?
What's?
Well, I think.
My art way can go there. It's like.
Is the dark bus the like smaller guy?
Yeah, the dark can, yeah, the dark can go.
But it doesn't, it's not set six, yeah.
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 And it won't take you to that.
So we do, I I meet quarterly with um with Link and our Public Works Director, so if there is feedback. Cause we were just talking about, like, okay, when out, when Autumn Stross eventually connects to Titus, like, could we, like. Could there be a stop at Titus in here? Like, could that then give us some more connectivity? Is there one up by you?
At the twenty thirty, seven twenty two.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, just the, as we grow over the next twenty years, there.
It would be nice for.
And and to make it easier to get.
Well, and and the bus stop, I mean, is a whole. The ability of getting a giant bus on a lot of the smaller streets, but more for East Wenatchee, it's also real tough, so.
Just to loot, I mean, I'm just thinking more.
Yeah.
Looping through the mate like.
When we, when we have a chance to come through. There was time that went through my number that actually went through. What's that meant?
So it's, so, so CUP for bus stop?
I don't, are you gonna go through the whole?
No, I'm just, no, we, I don't wanna waste everyone's time, cause this is, but I'd love to get your feedback and then I could bring some.
I mean, if there are some that we feel like we can just like.
Obviously.
Press off and be like, we don't even need to talk about this ever again.
Light, light industry and the light industrial?
We could group everything educational, so preschool and all the educational. To the one, if that's necessary, if there is something there.
But I don't think it's sub- substantially different in how it impacts the neighborhood than preschool.
Yeah. Oh, preschool and daycare. They're, yeah, 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 preschool and daycare.
Preschool and they're, they're other.
They're separated out. So I mean, the schools have tons of.
Cause they have, they're defined separately, but we could have standards for preschools and daycares, like, for together. There, cause there are standards for.
If you just give the recycling tenant, it's permitted in the light industrial.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That is something that is.
All, all, all they could have would be an intent, like, we have such strict code on wireless, like. In the commercial, it can't be, they can't, we don't allow towers.
Yeah, I see there's, so that, there's already.
Because we don't want the towers in our commercial zones.
I know, we just need some.
Yeah. If it was an industrial.
Funny, we're driving to Mount St. Helens, I feel like all the trees that are on like the, the, the. Previously, uh, you know, they're cut forests, they're all growing up the same height, they all look like Sultan Towers, and I was like, oh my god, it's a Sultan.
But yeah, I think with wireless to make telecommunications, are there enough? There's already. That like, do we, do we need further review or is there already?
I think, again, it it's touchy. Some people are very anti. They're like, it's gonna give me cancer and and. I, it requires a lot of um detailed, like specif- if you read that, look, maybe look through the code and tell me what I think. I don't feel like. There's a lot of specific reports you have to get, and I don't know that I would be knowledgeable enough to be able to.
Well, we can.
Rule on that. I I processed three. They're pretty easy to go through, but it does, I have had a lot of public comment on them. And so as a buffer, I'd still like to keep that.
Copy and printing establishment, that's old because they used to use like high volatile chemical. So that would be like huge fire hazards, but I feel like now.
Yeah. Coffee shop ever returned, we wouldn't wanna put barriers.
Yeah. Which, some of these are subject not to our criteria, but other ecology and other.
Yeah, like bulk, bulk fuel storage. Like bulk fuel storage, I feel like it's only allowed in light industrial. It's gonna have to meet fire code, it's gonna have to have a fire permit, and it'll have to have ecology.
I think it'd be useful to know, like, is, like, if there's already a process, like, one of the things that I saw in the uh. The conditional for the process, the application process, it was like, it's already gone through CIPA, we don't need to do any more like. Stuff here. But I feel like if a lot of these, as long as there is a process, like educational center. Or, I don't know, a lot of these things, a hospital, things like that, like, if there's a process somewhere.
I think. I think that CIPA covers some of it, but there are other things that CIPA doesn't touch that could impact.
Okay.
I I I can think, I, I should think of specific things. I should, I should pull some old CUPs and see what. What we haven't dressed in them or.
I'll just give us all of them.
I mean, I can send this electronically to you. I have it in accept, I, in Word, I think. I'm gonna do that right now.
Everybody can use.
Yeah.
Do your homework. You have so much. Get stuff done.
I just have to find it. But that would be a good starting point for us to at least um figure out what, what can go, what should be administrative, what you think. And it, it, this is workshop. This is, this is helpful to talk it out and go, oh, I didn't think about this or that. So if I get your guys' feedback and I can kinda consolidate that and go, okay, this is what I got. Where are we, where are we landing? And we can give our input from staff that has to process it. You can give me your input from. Those who could be on the other side of the counter and. Come up, I think you can come up with something good. And once we narrow that down, then we can go into, okay, what? Oh, and also look at what, I can send um your documents then too.
Oh, yeah.
What, if there are any general criteria, highlight what you like, and then that gives us something to work with. And if I can get that by like the end of the month.
If you have a different city or county that you find that you like better. Feel free to.
It's always fun to look at other people, see what they've done.
I know, I did look at a lot of codes.
Why are you even, we are really bad.
But ours is really bad.
Oh, yeah, just on that light industry is another game.
I know, I just, it makes no sense. Why would you and want light industry in other?
Yeah.
So the one for public utility is only theirs, so the public can come and say that you guys, we don't want you to put another sewer system.
Or substation. Yep.
Okay.
Know that we're also looking at defining a pu- like a potential public zone with our future like zoning. Map where like, like city, city properties, school properties, like certain places that is on public. Could potentially have more options to what they can do. Like more appropriately zone public than residential when it's a school. And then having an option for like um. Like if a school goes away for um adaptive reuse. With uh conditions. Yeah, anyway.
Maybe people will like uh CUP process because it's another opportunity, right? But it doesn't really work that way. It just sounds like it.
It, I mean, if there are actual issues, like if there's like, you can't permit this here because. ABNC, it's not meeting this code, but if we have criteria and it meets CIPA, I mean.
But then where else in the process?
That, that's why we need specific standards, like, okay, if a community center, we can't just think of one spot. If it were to go here, like, what could any impacts be? I, I.
I guess also, what would be the other part of the process where they could be comment on? Say we were to put a community center somewhere, they would be able to officially go on record and. What's the decision of where that center was placed? Would it be at a funding decision or?
See, that's what's. Well, that. Depends partly if it's a public facility and if it is. Be, if it's public, like the government or its building, then then. Like, I, the, the government is somewhat obligated to. Do what their constituents want them to do.
Okay.
And the government will pass out, but there's the. I mean, and I guess that's the thing, cause by the time you get to like applying for the permit, it's like, well, I sure hope you're applying for the permit. Cause like you've already gone that far down the road, you know?
So, so like something that. Somebody might disagree with more, like up the like wastewater treatment plants or something like that, like that. I guess like, did those concerns have probably been addressed before me, I guess.
Like in, in the technical stage of the, of the public project. I think that one of the tricks there, there was a community center is not defined.
As a public.
Public facility. So the city building, uh, city, a, a public community center is different than like. I guess like. Teenure Center or.
Um, what if, I mean, let me, I guess, some of this is like. But like, what if like the county or like Washington wanted to build some sort of something? In the town, I guess we would need to make sure that we had. Uh, like the discretion to be able to. Hold the power of the. Right, the layers of town.
Or you're saying no, too, right? It's an option. And the full administrative review. Does include public comment.
Public and agency.
Public and agency. Okay, so there is that.
It's just not a hearing, that's the one thing.
Yeah.
It allows staff to make the decision as opposed to the hearing.
Yeah, yeah. But for something like that, so if.
Yeah.
Yeah, like if the washout wanted to do a project in the city, the city would still like compile.
As long as we had an administrative review comment, yeah.
I think it boils down to like, do we have the staff capa- capacity to rule on somebody's face? Uh, are we gonna be getting a ton of appeals?
Honestly, I don't think there's gonna be, right, there's probably not gonna be a lot of CUPs coming in. So Lebanon is small, like the actual city limits. Not very big. We're not gonna get a lot.
I think it's gonna be like the public assembly places are gonna need to see anything that is classified under that. Private and public assembly use, which is a lot of these.
Or the, like the PD, building a substitute.
Or a utility, a, a major public utility versus small one. So yeah, your feedback would be super helpful. I'll send this all tonight um electronically, so you can kind of play.
Or in the morning, if you.
No, I'll forget.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll remember. I will, I'll um.
Our homework is going through and thinking about how we might group. Some of these into categories and to provide our opinions on what we think. Should or should not go through outside initial review versus full administrative review.
Versus just be outright.
Oh, yes.
Just not be whisper.
Or just outright denied, like say, oh, we don't want this in the cent, in the city at all.
Uh, and then also review the language that from the other.
And I'll send that out to Word, Word versions for everything, so you guys can put whatever you want in it. Um, I know we have a holiday Monday, and then next month we have our joint meeting with the council.
Oh.
For the docket. And we have to go to the council meeting. It will be, I'm trying to look ahead, sorry, I don't have a.
Seven. It would be at the council meeting.
Council will be the thirteenth.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have our regular meeting on the seventh.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Are you okay with still having a regular meeting? That's two meetings for you guys, but.
Yeah, that's the only thing that we got, okay?
And it's usually the very first item, like one of the very first items they do, so they.
And you can then go.
No, they're.
It's true, yeah, you don't have to stay the whole time.
But we'll put it at the beginning of the meeting, so they'll do their, their consent agenda and the basic.
Till January, till the seventh, yeah.
Which is after our next.
Yeah, our next meeting is on Wednesday, uh. Wednesday the seventh. So that is back to back, but it's cool, cause we can talk about docket a little bit before we go to talk to them about docket.
Yeah.
So um I'll have a good idea. I'm doing a uh. A uh little workshop with them next week to look at what our docket was this year. And what, what has already been a- adopted or addressed, what's currently in process, what maybe we aren't, isn't gonna be a priority. Like, I want them to prioritize some things, and then I put together a list of things that people brought to me. Because it's open right now to people, people's requests, so I'm putting that all together, so I can get a feel for what. Where they land before I bring it to you guys. Well, so that it's, cause I, I find that easier. So, we'll have the joint meeting and then they can approve the docket at the end of January. I, I, that's the, the goal.
Alright. Did you guys catch that while you were chatting over there, something? We agreed to two meetings in there.
The joint meeting will not, it's only like thirty, I, I, it should only be like thirty minutes, I hope. Cause they will have already seen some of it. You guys will have seen some of it.
Uh, let's see, do we still wanna stick around for some off street parking?
Oops, that's a very quick up.
It's just a quick up.
So I reached out to Transpo Group and they're gonna be doing, I haven't gotten my, I, I, we talked scope of work. Um, I had a phone call with them this week, and um they're gonna be putting together a budget and, and scope of work. For me, so I can prove that and have them move forward. Um, sorry, everything takes, it's like a snail's pace moving here. Um, but I, we, I kinda filled them in on, like, I, I gave them a copy of our. Current usage, current use chart, current parking code, where there were other areas in our code that talk about parking requirements that weren't in the parking code. Um, that were under maybe CUPs. So they have all that information and they're going to have something. Um, for us to review, and they said they've done something like this for other jurisdictions before. We're not gonna go into a full blown study. I don't think it needs that level. We just want them to look at what are the, like the standard um. How, our data is outdated, so use your standard methods to determine this. Um, and give out, build in some flexibility. Uh, so they should be coming with that. I'll have a better idea probably the next time we meet where they're at with that. But it sounded like it was very promising that, yes, they can do that. And so Transpo Group is who will be using for that work, cause we have an open contract with them. And the cost per stall will be coming forward from, and that's not even up to you guys. But um, the, the council will, I mean, they'll be the ones approving that, but. We're, we'll get an idea of what a cost per stall will be when we get the um study done for the parking garage.
And is the plan with that, that the cost per stall would be. Somehow equivalent to the fee in the.
Yeah, we'll have to find that, that sweet spot, that neck, the nexus to say, okay, if you're not gonna provide parking on site, you're gonna pay this fee. And that's the equivalent of what it would cost you to put in a stall. Um, so we'll get to that, but I think first we needed to regroup our. Our existing uses, cause they do not line up. I made a chart. I didn't give it to you guys, or maybe it was in here, I don't remember, but I gave a chart to Transpo Group to, that kinda consolidated everything kinda like this. And so I think they have a good starting point. I think you guys will be happy with them. And I may even have them presented. We'll see. But that's where I'm at. I think that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions now on the agenda or discussion topics? And I, I do, I was going through this year just as a. I apologize that things have taken so long. I feel like we had to do a lot of meetings for just to get through our hearing tonight, and I appreciate the time and effort you guys have put in. This has been a huge learning curve for me over the last year, and I just appreciate you sticking with me. Um, and it will get better.
You're doing a great job.
It was a lot of people to get through, to get to the year again, like, so.
It's, there's a lot of work and it's hard because I'm, you know. Yeah, this is one part of it, like.
Yeah, well, and I told you, you know, to make it. And we're like, let's change the entire chapter on.
Yeah.
Design, design standards.
Everything.
So.
Well, it needed to be fixed, right?
I think, I think what you guys picked though for, for the development standards does align really well. With, uh, what a community would like. Anyway, I just appreciate you all and thank you for. For being supportive.
Right back at you last.
Yeah.
And, yeah, that's all I have.
Shall we?
A second.
It was Elizabeth and Colin.
Thank you.
All in favor.
Hi, hi.
Great.
Missy Dokes, bye. Bye, guys.
I'll be in soon, just giving baby another month, so. Till she gets her, till she gets her shots.
She's really sweet, just so funny. Have you met her? I've seen him walking his room.
I'm so excited for Andy, I can't argue. I'm like, I'm gonna come over on lunch break and hold your baby so you can shower. Oh. It's nice that, I'm like, I'm so happy that part of my.
Oh, we can stop, stop recording as I'm talking about.